All right, well called to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chanson? Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Yur?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 12 in attendance.
So I have Chanson that is absent, who else is absent?
Alderman Knop?
I'm here.
Knop is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear him.
Hello.
Okay, we have 13.
Okay.
We have to teach him to speak into the microphone.
Uh huh. We haven't done the reminder yet.
We can't teach part timers new tricks.
Right?
There it is.
Get the other voice out. Pretend you're out on a field. Okay, reminder to please speak directly into your microphone for the BATV recording and so the rest of us can hear you. Okay, item number three is approval of minutes from August 17th, 2021. Any comments, corrections, notations? Need a motion?
The minutes from August 17th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Knop, second by Yur. Roll call, please.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanson? Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yur?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
And Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next is items to be removed or changed. We haven't, nothing. We'll go right on to matters from the public. Not see anybody in the room? Anybody online?
We do not have anyone from the public online.
Okay. We'll move on to item number six, discussion on the use of the American Recovery Plan Act funding.
Yes. On March 11th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed House Rule 1319 entitled the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The law will provide $1.9 trillion in economic stimulus and COVID-19 relief. Included in that are certain funds which flow to us through the state of Illinois. Under this act, the city of Batavia is entitled to receive $3.26 million in two tranches. We received our first tranche of 50% of the funding last month, and so that already resides in with the city at this time. There is no pressing need to identify the ways that we intend to spend this as it can be spent through the end of 2024. And even it goes beyond 2024, even if the money is just obligated by that time, that is sufficient. Now, we do have to do quarterly reporting to U.S. Treasury on the ways that we're using the funding, but we do not need to seek preapproval for the ways that we use the funding. We just are obligated to follow the guidelines that are presented in the interim rule. Based on the act, municipalities will be allowed to use ARPA funds on eligible costs incurred by December 31st, 2024, and eligible costs include: One, costs to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Costs to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the municipality that perform essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. The third, our costs for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of a municipality due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to the revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the municipality, or, and this is the final category, costs to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. I had distributed to you a seven-page document that was produced by the Illinois Municipal League that provides a summary of the act and its requirements. As part of that document, it said, what should municipalities do first? The city of Batavia has done all of those things. We have Dunn's number, we are, we do have an active SAM registration in place, and we have performed all actions required in order to receive our funding through the state of Illinois, and as indicated, we have already received our first 50% of the funding. Also included in the IML document were links to additional information. The U.S. Treasury Department has released guidance for municipalities with, especially the FAQ are especially informative. There are 42 pages of frequently asked questions, and their answers available at a link in this document. They talk about some of the ineligible uses. I think it's important to point those out, too. There is a prohibition against funding to directly or indirectly offset reductions in tax revenue due to a change in law from March 3rd, 2021, through the last day of the fiscal year in which the funds have been spent, a prohibition against making a deposit into a pension fund, or for the purpose of making, or for the purpose of reducing an accrued unfunded liability. And also, several other ineligible uses include funding debt service, funding legal settlements or judgments, deposits to rainy day funds or financial reserves, and general infrastructure pending, spending is not covered as an eligible use unless the spending is on water, sewer, and broadband investments addressing a specific pandemic, public health need, or a specific negative economic impact. When, recently, we had a discussion about some of the unfunded projects that we had, capital projects, we identified a couple of drainage projects that would qualify for the use of this funding. One of those is Mahoney Creek, for which a lot of preliminary study has been performed, and that we would be able to accomplish the, some of the goals that we had for improving the drainage of that area. Something that would be nice about utilizing the funding for that purpose as well is related to the discussion that we had yesterday concerning the Chicago Climate Action Plan and the Greenest Region Compact Framework. Projects like this are aimed at resilience against problems that are exacerbated by climate change. And so I think Edith Macra yesterday was saying, through these plans, we are trying to manage the avoidable and to avoid the unmanageable. And so I think that that Mahoney Creek project is something that helps us to manage the avoidable circumstance of the flooding that people have been experiencing in that area. It also would be very easy from an accounting and reporting standpoint for us to use, you know, a significant portion of that funding toward that one project, and would save us the interest expense that we would have incurred had we decided to, you know, go with a bond issuance or short-term loan in order to fund that project as well. Other than that, from staff's perspective, we don't really have any immediate suggestions as to how to utilize the funding, and in talking with some of the, my peers in other cities, it seems that many of us are taking a very measured approach to determining how we will utilize the funding, choosing to, you know, take inventory of what the best practices out there are that we see amongst other municipalities nationwide who are in the same situation that we are with this reserve of funds that can be used in the manner described under the act. And so I would open it up to discussion and questions.
You want to start, Mark?
Sure. I mean, I know when it was presented in the unfunded budgets, I just don't see why we wouldn't just say, let's use it for Mahoney Creek and Carriage Crest and just move on. I mean, this doesn't have to be a very long discussion. I think we should just do it. It falls right in the things that we're allowed to do, and they're unfunded, and now they're funded. I think it's as simple as that personally.
When you were talking to other municipalities, just what are some examples of what they might be using it for?
Similar capital projects like this. I really haven't heard of many other programs that have been implemented at the municipal level. You know, county-level programs, I'm starting to hear about county-level programs, and of course, state-level programs. But I have not heard many municipal-level programs at all yet, aside from Mayor Lightfoot's announcement this morning about the Chicago-based program to provide some interim income to low-income households, the most severely impacted by COVID.
Abby?
What was the total for the Mahoney Creek and Carriage Crest currently projected? I mean, does this stretch across the whole thing? I just don't have those.
It wouldn't pay for all of it. I believe that the Carriage Crest estimate right now, because we're really early in the process, is 3.5 million, whereas Mahoney Creek was 1.2 million.
Okay. I agree with Mark, and I like that plan of using this towards that. The only other thing that I would like to keep in the back of our heads as, as other examples from municipalities pop up, creative ways to provide economic aid in that section of the, what we can spend the ARPA funds on, supporting our small businesses and finding ways to help rebuild our downtown economy post-COVID. A little bit of money might spread really far there, and there might be some really cool examples that pop up in other states and cities that we could copy.
I was actually thinking, as we have some major construction projects that will be coming to our downtown area, and that we have businesses who are already struggling because of COVID, that this might offer the opportunity for us to utilize some of the funding toward programming for that.
That was going to be one of the things I was going to suggest, was to set aside some of it, whether it be, you know, $100,000 or $200,000 to try to keep, if we end up in a situation where we, you know, get six months further down the road, or a year down the road, and we have another shutdown.
Right.
You know, to be able to have some money for that, because I'm sure, just from glancing through what I've read and going over on this, I think that would be a use we could do with that money. And that way, if we need it, we have it for that, and because we don't have such tight timeframes on spending the money, if we get through that and we don't use it for that, then roll it back into the infrastructure things we want to do.
Yeah.
Anybody else here, anybody online have any comments?
I see you're unmuted, Tony.
Yes, I'm just trying to raise my hand. Yeah, I absolutely agree with Mark. You know, the idea of not paying interest by having to sell bonds for these projects, we know this has got to get done. We've been asking, where's the money coming from? It's, here it is. So I'm fully supportive of that.
I am as well.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing we can do, and I think that's the way we can save money, is by not having to bond out for that. And if we can work it in over the next couple of years of increasing the budget in that area to cover the difference in this, then we still don't have to go out and bond out for money. No, I think that's probably the best thing to do.
I would also like to point out that I think a lot of municipalities are going to use a significant portion of this funding for addressing lead service issues, and because of the work that our water department did to secure over $4 million in forgivable loans to address those issues in our community, we will not have to use these funds to cover the cost of that, which is amazing.
And I think one other thing we also have to be cognizant of is, I think there's more money coming later, and whether it's an infrastructure bill or whatever comes next, I really think that, I don't know where the money's coming from, but I think it's going to come. So we'll end up all paying for it eventually. Who else?
I raised a hand, yeah. I just wanted to express my support for the plan. It sounds like a slam dunk to use money to cover something that we did not have a budget for, and I'd also strongly support, if there is a little bit extra, save it to see if our downtown businesses are in need at any point in time. I agree with Emmy, that that would probably go, a little bit of money would go far there. So, it sounds like good ideas to me.
So I think that we wanted to direct staff to plan on using the majority of that for those two infrastructure projects, and figure out, you know, somewhere, I would say 100,000 to 200,000 that we hold back out of that, and not hope that it's extra, but hold it back to start with, because if we don't need it, then we can always turn it back into that. Gary?
The timing of Carriage Crest is such that that will not go to construction until 2023 anyways.
Okay. And have we, have we planned already money, you think, in the budgets over the next two years, to do all the engineering and everything to get to that point, to go to construction?
That would be part of the 2022 budget.
Right, okay. So I think that that's something important that we, it's something that we can't ignore any longer, and the fact that we have money that can be spent on that, I think it's the right thing to do.
Alderman Lehman.
Yes. This is actually maybe bringing up just a general question, but on eligible uses, it says, address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including blah, 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 households. Do we have anything set up in Batavia for individual households that have been negatively impacted?
We have a number of different resources available to households who are affected by COVID. Number one would be the lie heap program, which assists with the payment of utility bills, and that is administered through the township.
Okay.
As well, our United Way organization has funding for assistance with utilities, with rent payments, and they are working in collaboration with the Salvation Army to assist families who need those resources. And of course, you know, we've got our wonderful food pantry and clothes closet, who, while they have seen an enormous increase in the number of families that utilize their services, they've also seen a tremendous outpouring of generosity from the community that allows them to help and provide for those needs. And then there is also a state program for rental assistance. My understanding is that that is having a little bit of a struggle right now, that the resources available to process those requests are insufficient to meet the demands of the community. And so we are looking to our partners within the county and other partner organizations to try to make sure that no Batavia resident is going to fall through the cracks and make sure that they have access to those resources.
Yeah, and hear me say, I'm fully in support of putting the money towards the Mahoney Creek and the other one, but just curious, like if we have enough funding for the individual households also. Thank you.
Do we know, did the township get any of, any of this?
I'm unsure whether the township received funding under this.
Okay. And that might be something we might want to look at, too, if that's, if they have it and they decide what they're going to do, we should make sure that we get that information out to the public. Abby?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Laura was saying, too, about as long as we get the resources out there for anyone listening that anyone needs the assistance. Community contacts is the organization in King County and DeKalb County that serve, does the weatherization, rental assistance, home rehab, lie heap for qualifying households. And while I'm not sure exactly what the impacts of COVID and ARPA funding would be for organizations like that, I, in, at least the first version of the Clean Energy Jobs Act, there was a lot of funding focused on funneling to those kinds of agencies to help with those that would be harder hit by higher rates of energy costs. So, and right now, as it is, they get more money than they seem to find clients for. So if anybody, anybody should go and check out both low and mid-income levels for different programs, to see if they qualify for something like a new furnace, or something like a new air conditioning, or they can help pay your utility bills, or help get you reconnected if you're disconnected due to late payment or anything like that. So, Community Contacts, cci-hei.org. Shameless.
Is that connected with 211?
I would hope so, but I don't know. I will check.
And that's something I think maybe, you know, since you know enough about that, Abby, to maybe help, that might be something we might want to figure out how to get that linked off our website, so if somebody goes to the utility billing site and wants to say, hey, I can't pay my bill for the next two months.
I was just looking to see if it was on there, because I know, my mom works there, that's why I know so much, and I'm on the board. And so I know she writes the city of Batavia a lot of checks for people's utility bills, so. I, yes, I think they are on here. It doesn't have, it says Low Income Energy Assistant Program, and then it's CC, it doesn't say Community Contacts, but it is their phone number there.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's there, so that way, when people need it, they have it available. Okay.
Thank you for the direction.
We made it through that one. And then up next would be item seven, which is approval of design for entryway signs.
Okay, I believe Griffin is online. Oh, he's got his hand raised, hang on. Maybe he's in, but as a attendee, might need to promote him. Should we allow him to talk? Yes. Promote to panelist.
I know you couldn't hear me, but I was laughing. So, yes, Laura, if you wouldn't mind putting up that image that we had sent out earlier, and I'll just kind of give an overview of what we talked with Mark Chappie, and kind of good direction here for what we're looking at.
Here we go.
So, as you can see, we've got the revision there on the right with the blue, and we have the original on the left, and then I just kind of put together quickly, you know, kind of what it would look like, just with those colors standing up vertical, and that could kind of be changed. We had talked about it in the department head meeting today, the idea that having these bigger entryway signs would be great, you know, at those more prominent areas, and then those other areas that have been identified in the catalog could have, saving some of that expense, this alternate that's still on that same branding level. And then if you guys were to decide that you wanted to go forward with either one of these options, I believe we've only budgeted to have two of the large horizontal signs installed right now, so we could be working on a vertical design if we wanted to keep that option available, and fine-tune that while we're installing the other ones and figuring out how that looks. So I'd like to hear, obviously, feedback from all of you. From my personal standpoint, I do think the blue looks a little better, but please discuss and let me know your thoughts.
Want to start, Mark? Go that way and go. I can go the other side. Make Keenan go first this time. Sarah, you get to go first then. We'll go online first.
Okay, so I, I also really like the blue, I think it looks very nice. At first glance, the vertical ones struck me slightly, I don't know the best way to phrase this, and my sons had a lot of baseball games this weekend at Pearland Field, so maybe I spent a lot of time in the cemetery, but they looked a little headstone-ish at first glance. I don't know of anybody else?
It's spooky season, I saw it, too.
But I do like those designs at the same time, but I, I personally think the blue looks really nice and goes with our river-town kind of theme. As far as the brown goes, though, if we do go that direction, I think that that can look nice, too. Do we know more about the exact brown that would be? What, would it look exactly like this?
Yeah, you're kind of looking at, you know, what was decided upon, so if these were produced in actuality, they would be very similar to these colors.
Okay.
Alderman Vogelsinger, what we were going for in the color of the brown, what you see when you look at Corten steel, which is what the walking bridge is made out of?
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. Kind of a reddish brown.
A reddish brown, okay, okay, that was what I was kind of wondering. Those are all the thoughts that I have. Thank you.
Does anybody else online want to chime in now?
Sure. If we're just going around the block, can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead, Nick.
I like them both. I personally prefer the brown, not to just take the opposite side. The blue kind of stands out too much, doesn't look natural, and I'm thinking the setting where they'll be will probably be more grassy tree areas, so I like that, but I'd be happy with, with either one. I'm really happy with the designs. As far as the, the vertical ones, I prefer the, not the white ones, the solid ones, and again, lean a little towards the brown, but I think the blue would be good to bring in the river concept, but that's all my thoughts.
Tony?
Yeah, I prefer the horizontal brown. The horizontal over the vertical, I like the date in there, 1833. The blue, I'm sorry, it's Geneva. It's Viking, I don't know if it's the exact blue, but, you know, will be comments made surely about that, both in our community and elsewhere. The, I really think the base, and I know it's the more expensive option, should be limestone, just like we have the date in there, you know, to, you know, our link to history and proud of our history. When you look at downtown and all the limestone we have there, the quarries, the quarries that are still operational today, I think speaks volumes of Batavia history, and it's beautiful, that limestone. So I'm, I'm in favor of the horizontal brown.
Everybody online is done. Abby, you're next.
I, too, prefer horizontal over vertical, and I, as soon as you said what it was in reference to the brown color, then I, then I loved it, but I also then, much like the floating, I agree with Tony that I want it to be limestone, and just like the floating, the floating signs, I don't, I don't, can it be the steel material? I'm sure that would be a much extra cost, but how much extra? And could it, I mean, I know Geneva, not to copy Geneva again, but Geneva signs have a metal aspect to it, so if it could be, you know, real authentic and have that same material, then I would be 100% sold on it. But if it's just painted that color, then a little less sold, but I like.
Anybody else on the side? Joe, go ahead.
When I first saw the vertical, especially the brown one, I had two thoughts. One was a tombstone, the other was a Taco Bell hot sauce pack. That's what it looked like, maybe I was hungry at the time, but that's what I saw, and I thought, oh, no, 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 no.
And I, as soon as you said what it was in reference to the brown color, then I, then I loved it, but I also then, much like the floating, I, I agree with Tony that I want it to be limestone, and just like the floating, the floating signs, I don't, I don't, can it be the steel material? I'm sure that would be a much extra cost, but how much extra? And could it, I mean, I know Geneva, not to copy Geneva again, but Geneva signs have a metal aspect to it. So if it could be, you know, real authentic and have that same material, then I would be 100% sold on it. But if it's just painted that color, then a little less sold, but I, I like.
Anybody else on the side? Joe, go ahead.
When I first saw the vertical, especially the brown one, I had two thoughts. One was a tombstone, the other was a Taco Bell hot sauce pack. That's what it looked like. Maybe I was hungry at the time, but that's what I saw, and I thought, oh, no, 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 no. I'm sold on the, on the horizontal. And Nick, you brought up a good point about the brown and how it blends in with where this is going to sit, and it has a more natural look to it, sitting in with grass around it, trees around it, and then Laura, the tie-in with the bridge, that just, that sells me on that color.
Yeah, I'm for the horizontal brown as well, and I, I can't remember, we had such a lengthy conversation on this, wasn't this approved already?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just coming up with a different alternative.
But what was the last version that we saw? Did we see it without the, the, there was a ribbon on top and there was something else like a frame around it?
We decided to eliminate all of that.
Yeah.
What's on the left at the bottom is what we approved.
We've seen already.
That was what the approval was.
We had the brown, and then there was like this wisp of blue at the top of it, like the river, and we thought that that was just a little bit too busy, and would we really like that 10 years from now? Or should we just keep it simple so that it stood the test of time?
I remember some other comment, I feel like Jenny, did you say that, you know, to have the logo on a piece of limestone, and maybe I'm making that up, but to have that, that light section on the side be actual stone, that's why I feel like it wasn't, I don't remember. I don't, it goes so far back.
We can find the minutes, we can find the video.
Yeah, something, something we had talked about kind of when we were going over all the options was that, you know, we wanted the logo and we wanted Batavia to really stand out. And I think that when we had looked at, you know, if the whites that the logo's on now had been like a silver, you know, brushed metal, it was too hard to kind of identify, and then the metal kind of didn't go with the stone beneath, and so it kept getting complicated or confused. And so then when we had landed on that one on the bottom left, that was a very clear message. And the good news being, you know, we're kind of more arguing, you know, over color and material at this point, but it, looking at the text and the logo layout, you know, that's right away, if you were to see that driving, that is the City of Batavia, no doubt, no confusion, and it, and it gets that message across.
Go ahead Leah.
Um, I did go back and watch the county meetings from February 2020 today, because I was curious about the, the conversation that was had, and this, this final product that it does look a lot better than what was originally, or not better, but you know, I like how you guys, what you did with, how you came up with this idea. And I agree that I think the limestone on the bottom, the base would be like the walls here, right?
Right.
And when you mentioned the steel, that makes a lot more sense than a painted brown sign, which is what was my first visualization of this. But I'm just curious if we can see that final product before we, you know, or like an idea of the product instead of what looks kind of like clip art right now.
I, I think that would be possible in the, as we go, what we're, once we decide on this, Shoppe Design is who helped us to do this, and we're utilizing their engineering drawings to prepare our request for proposals. And in those requests for proposals, once we hire somebody based on that, they can bring us the sample materials from which the sign will be made. Because I would like, we want to have alternatives in the proposal. For instance, if you did a stone base, what would it cost? If you did an artificial base, what does it cost? Because you need to take a look at that, and then also understand the ongoing maintenance costs, where the foam material isn't going to have any ongoing maintenance costs versus having to do the tuck pointing and whatnot of the
Limestone.
real stone base. But when people are walking, so, and this is a difference that Gary brought up, you'd never use a faux stone base on something that was sitting out in front of city hall that people, pedestrians were walking six feet from. But as you're passing down the road at 30 miles per hour, then it becomes less important that it's real stone. But you'll always know, right? Because you approved the sign.
Another thought I had about the vertical, which I do agree it does in this version look a little bit like a headstone, but what if we took away the limestone base on the vertical and it was all just steel? Which might look a little bit like what I think Geneva has done also, but it would look less like a headstone if we wanted to do vertical at all. It was just a thought I had.
I do want to point out that this vertical example I'm showing you, I whipped up in about 20 minutes today to make sure that we have an alternate to look at, and that because we are doing a finalized version of horizontal stuff, we do have plenty of time if we want to pursue a vertical option, to look at some different designs and to reach out to the sign company and say, hey, you know, show us these metal options, et cetera, and, and have those as alternatives.
Aren't we going to need some vertical ones anyway though, to be within budget? I mean, we're not going to have horizontal ones at every, at every point.
That was the thought today, was that these are on such a smaller scale that, and, and you know, the size of our signs right now are pretty small-ish, you know, and that this vertical size, scale type of thing might work well where the smaller signs exist today.
Mark, you're up next.
Yeah, the hesitation I have against the, the vertical ones is the lettering is very small. I know the lettering on the horizontal ones is what, that's a foot and a half tall, big is what it says in there. And I'd be afraid you'd, you'd drive by, you wouldn't even know what it said. You're, you're going by 30 miles an hour, you can't read it that quickly.
Right.
And, and focus on it. I can't, I have good vision and, and only because I know that it says City of Batavia, and that's 30 feet away from, I know that's a difference between a screen and, and in real life, but driving by, I don't think you'd be able to see it. So that's, that's my hesitation there.
And I think we can work on the scale. You know, the, these smaller ones, we can continue to try to refine and bring you something because it's not something that, the horizontal signs, we have in the budget this year, and so we just want to get those to RFP and be able to put those on Batavia Avenue.
Yeah, and, and yeah, I would go with the, the brown. And one of the reasons is, I look at the screen up there, my screen here, and my phone, it's, they're all different colors, so it's three different blues is what I see in three different locations. You don't know what you're getting until all of a sudden it's out in the field and you're like, that's not what I thought it was going to look like. And I, the brown, if it's a different shade of brown, it's still a natural color, and you're not going to, that's not going to bother you as much as it blends in with, with nature.
And?
Um, I'm still sold on the brown horizontal.
Nice. Speaking of the microphone.
I'm still sold on the brown horizontal. I just think it's crisp, it speaks out Batavia. I just feel like the other verticals, City of Batavia gets lost there, it's more of the logo, and when you're trying to sell yourself, when you're trying to sell yourself of an entryway to the community, you want people to know where they're entering. To kind of go along the lines of the blue, Geneva, I also see it as a wildcat, West Chicago, because my kid swims there, so, but I, I do like the brown.
And that's Wild Dogs, by the way.
Is it Wild Dogs?
Yeah.
I thought it was Wildcats.
Well, it's Wild Dogs when Batavia and West Chicago are together.
Oh, oh no. We go.
That's what it's called.
It's We Go.
I know.
I mean, they have a fine swim team.
Right. That's because we're there. Keenan?
That's right.
Do you have any comments?
I don't. I'll go with, with the brown because that's what we all said before. I like colors, but I don't want to drag this out.
You know, the, the vertical one would make a nice banner if it was hanging from a flagpole or a light stand or downtown city lights. That layout makes a nice looking banner. Or if we wanted to sell flags to people to hang up our other homes.
That's a brilliant idea. I'd buy one.
It's also a really nice looking patch on somebody's shoulder too. That, that's what I see when I first look at that.
There, there are other uses for that, but I think as an entryway sign.
Mm-hmm.
I'll tell you what, it looks great on our city trucks. I love seeing our city trucks with a flagpole on it. I thought that that turned out really well in, in the black.
Your Honor?
Yeah, I guess I would suggest that one way we could kind of continue to work this through, and as all of us know, there's many times we have discussions here, and we really have not disagreements, but varying views about stuff. I would suggest that maybe we buy a few of each color, and then they both say the same thing, and we can see if one gets much more positive results or reactions than the other one, and then eventually we switch to that one color by itself. But that way you would, you would be able to test both colors and see, you know, you could do two on each side, or, you know, let's say Route 31, one's blue and one's brown, either way, and say in Route 25, the same thing. And let's see what people say about it.
The mayor's point, I just reminded you, the major design with a base, and then the last curtain, two poles that are going to come up, and then the sign that's on, everything above the limestone is made to be able to come off and be replaced with this, and if our logo were to change or if they're still, so, the mayor's point, if you travel brown one on one and blue on another, you can always just take it off and put their color on. And the other thing that's come up here tonight, I think we should add-
Gary, they can't hear you online. Sorry.
There you go.
The other thing that will come up tonight, that has come up tonight, is I think we should add a pay item to the contract for these mockups, because I think if a contractor puts a price in there, and we describe to him exactly what we want, and he puts a price in there, he's going to be more enthused about doing it as opposed to, you know, giving you little samples. He, you know, we're going to specify what he has to give you for a mockup, bring it here, present it, get approval. We specify it and pay for it, we'll get it so that we get what we want to get as part of the contract.
And refresh my memory again, the sign is actually like a poly-
There's different options.
Okay.
Yeah, so there was-
Because it's not going to be painted, it's actually going to be whatever the material it's made out of, if it's going to be brown, red, whatever you want to call the color, it's going to be that all the way through it. It's not going to be a surface coloring.
No, none of them would be painted, but there's the high, a polyethylene, a foam craft, wood, aluminum, and then high-density urethane. So there are, these are all durable and long-lasting type of materials. They all look a little different, and you know, that, that does not count for, as was suggested tonight, you know, even steel, other options.
And I guess I'll put the, the rest of my two cents in here. I, I've always thought that after what we went through to get to this point, to have the, the brown or burgundy one on the left side, I look at it and I just think burgundy, I don't think the rusty steel. I just think that that's what it looks like to me. The other ones on top look like patches. They look like logos on the side of a truck, or they look like a patch on an employee's uniform. That's what I see when I look at those. If you were to take and add some similar swoosh like there is on the horizontal one to the top one, and get rid of the city of, and just leave Batavia there and have welcome over the top of it, I, I think that would be more of an entryway sign than, to me, what looks like a patch on top of the, the concrete. And that's as plain as I think I can put it. I really think we do the two bottom ones, you know, or do the, the bottom one for the two signs that we have, we wanted to do this year in the budget, and I would think we do them both the same color. I think if we start putting different colors in different places in town, we'll get as much grief for having, you know, different things as we would for, you know, trying to use a different color.
The mockups will have the colors on them, so-
Yes.
When we have the, we see the mockups, maybe we decide and the public gives us more input of like, we like this color, we like this one. That way we don't have to have two signs out there and then decide. Maybe we may all decide we like the brown, or we may all decide we like the blue, but the mockups will help us visualize those instead of being on the screen, so. But like you said, the vertical ones we have in the budget, let's get going on those, and then we can look at the mockups later.
Horizontal. Horizontal ones, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think that to me, that's, that's the most important, I mean, the biggest thing is if you're out on random road, especially if it's down at Mooseheart, you're, you're not going 30 miles an hour.
I know.
I'm not going to say what speed most people are going, but it's well above the speed limit out there.
Well, the speed limit is 45, not 40.
You know, I, I say just, I just say stick with the brown, I, I, not even showing different colors to the public. It's, now it's a, now it's, we had a hard enough time in 14, we're going to have 25,000 people give their opinion. I think it's, we decided on brown a long time ago, and we have like 85% kind of leaning in that direction anyway, so it's just-
The majority-
We're making, we're making this a very long discussion over something that
Even color, even color-wise, if we have our differences, everybody is happy with the horizontal one. I haven't heard anybody say, no, we don't want to do that.
Right.
So I think at this point, if we were going to do any vertical ones, it would have to be redone, and I don't know if we want to spend the time to go through that unless it's in-house.
Oh, I wouldn't recommend that we hold up the process for the vertical signs, wouldn't go in until the next year's budget anyway. Um, I just wanted to point out that Alderman Vogelsinger has her hand up.
Oh, Sarah, go ahead.
Just one more thing, hearing Laura's explanation of the brown and hearing more about what the material would be, I think that is a wonderful way to go. So that is my amended opinion on the topic.
So to Keenan's point, will we still see different mockups of the brown with different materials with price, price tags on them?
So I think that that's how we'll want to bid the project. We'll want to, um, we want to bid, bid the project with an a la carte, if you will, or a buffet, with different, not necessarily colors, but different materials and requirement for mockups. So the, the way they bring in a blue, they bring in a brown, and they bring you in an example of, you know, the different sign materials so that you know what you're, what you might be getting, and then you, then you can make your final choices.
I think that's-
Timing wise, I mean, I'll just be honest, timing wise, Shoppe said that they would be a month after we give them direction to proceed, so that puts us in the last week of October. We have to put the boilerplate on it and get it out to bid, and then bring it back through city council process. We're getting to really close to the end of November at that point. I would like to have the mockup process go throughout the winter months so that next spring we could be ready to actually put trouble on the ground. I think that's a, that's a realistic timeline.
Okay.
Good to be.
I don't know how we make it any faster, but it is what it is.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Up next would be project status that is different than yesterday.
The only thing that I have is that today the mayor and I had the opportunity to have lunch with the mayor and city administrators from St. Charles and Geneva, and one of the topics that we wanted to discuss was that Edith Maffra had sent us a request asking whether we wanted to host a Army Corps, I'm sorry, AmerCor intern to assist the tri-cities with a sustainability project. The cost for that intern would be $18,000 borne equally amongst the three cities, and the, you know, of course, we could sort of refine what the project would look like, but we would try to have it be something akin to the development of a sustainability plan for our three cities that might be, you know, customizable and adaptable to each one of those cities, but sort of to create that sustainability plan framework for us. This was something that Edith had approached us about in 2019, and due to COVID, we really didn't, never moved forward more with the project, but she would like to, us to reconsider whether we would be interested in collaborating in that way, and she doesn't know for sure yet, but there may be ARPA funding available through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus that might be able to assist us with this as well, as you saw in that last portion of infrastructure projects, was aimed at sustainability issues. So I'm just trying to bring that to your attention, and if that sounds like something that you would be interested in seeing, I was planning- I was planning on having that be part of the 2022 budget.
Mike?
Is St. Charles and Geneva both interested in doing that?
Yes, they both, they both expressed interest.
So it's 18,000 for each municipality?
It is actually 6,000 for each.
Boy, they have a young intern help us out on that and they'd probably be very aggressive and knowledgeable about stuff like that. I think it would be great for us to join in with them.
And how long would the intern?
I think it's a year long.
A year long.
Project.
Yeah, that's not a lot of money.
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing to do. Abby, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I had, um, I'd mentioned it in passing during the budget discussions last year, but it was, um, already a heated budget discussion of anything extra. So I didn't press it and I knew that it wouldn't get in the budget for 2021. Um, I had hoped in, in talking with the Batavia Environmental Commission, the Natural Resources Commission in St. Charles, and then I spoke to Mayor Burns about it directly instead of, uh, the GRC there, but, um, or the NRC there. Um, about their interest level. And I'd hoped that we'd be able to fundraise for it to get our $6,000 covered for this year for 2020. Um, but with COVID, that didn't happen either because as you've heard, there's, you know, talks about the tri-cities doing a bag fee um, for plastic bags. And I thought that would very quickly and easily cover it. But thanks COVID, it didn't happen. So, um, it's a fantastic program. I have, I have been on meetings with past classes of Greenest Region Corps members and the projects that they work on and the things that they accomplish for the cities that they, um, are with is phenomenal. I mean, it will take, it takes staff time. It takes, I mean, it takes dedication for, um, for our leadership to help guide them and direct them and give them the resources they need. It'll take vision and, and support from us, um, and the other municipalities as well. But I think it would be, it would be fabulous.
And I think after what we decided to be part of last night, I think this is a good step forward in that and something that we should do. Tony, go ahead.
Uh, yeah. Um, as a former Peace Corps volunteer, AmeriCorps, similar to volunteers in service to America, um, I could not be in, in more support of it, uh, you know, for a myriad of reasons. Uh, one of them, um, being the, um, the impact that it will have on the individual that's actually going to come and work with us, the intern. Um, it gives them a tremendous opportunity and creates, uh, people that are very qualified to address issues. So I'm in full support.
I'm also an AmeriCorps grad myself. I did.
All right.
Yep. Fire thinning in South Lake Tahoe, which then is heartbreaking to see it. They'll go down in flames, but.
Anybody else?
I hear nothing but support for it. So I will make sure that we include that in the 2022 budget and, uh, work with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, um, on getting a, an AmeriCorps volunteer. The other thing that I just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention is that the Batavia Rotary Club, um, would like to purchase one of these oversized Adirondack chairs that perhaps you see when you're traveling that are just kind of like a, a photo opportunity um, for people. And they contacted the Batavia Park District to see if, uh, the park district would allow it, um, somewhere along the Riverwalk. And the park district said they don't have any objection, but because they work in close partnership with the City of Batavia on, uh, collaborating on the maintenance of that space, they would want to know if the city council uh, was okay with, uh, that type of placement or if they had any objection.
I think it's a cool idea. I do. Started racking my brain when I saw that before that where would we actually put it? So let somebody else make that decision.
Let them decide what color it is.
Let the park, let the park district have that. I, I think that that's fine.
I'm guessing it's going to be rotary blue. Have you seen the bench?
Yeah. And that's fine. I think it's interesting because I think that could be one, the fact that we used to have the Oscar cast or the original casting started down here on South Shumway. That could be another cool one. Um, you know, those type of things that again, you're, you're in a little town, visiting somebody or passing through or whatever, and those opportunities then stick in your mind and you tell other people about them or you bring people back to do that again. I think that's an interesting idea.
Alderman Malay has his hand up.
Tony, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, did they indicate where they would be getting the, or who the, would be supplying the chair?
Wayne's World of Woodworking.
Okay.
Wayne is going to be relocating to, I believe, Glendale, Arizona at the end of this week. So actually the Rotary Club, um, had already committed to purchasing the chair, hoping and praying that, uh, city council would look on this idea favorably.
Okay. I saw, and then I saw the chair. It was sitting outside his shop there the other day.
Yes, yes.
If we didn't approve it rotary, probably just raffle it off.
There you go.
Make money with it. Sarah, go ahead.
I saw it outside of his shop too. It's brown. So the color's been cited. We'll see with our signs. I love this idea. They have one like this, um, in a town in Colorado that my family vacations at often. And we have taken pictures of our children in that chair over the years, starting with my son when he was the size of a basketball. And it's a really cool thing. So I'm glad our town is getting one. And I agree, let them decide where to put it.
Yeah, we, we did that.
Waterworks best. Yeah.
With our kids that had tottenpole down at Starved Rock.
Yeah.
When they were little and that's where we went down that way and had breakfast there and then went out and got a Christmas tree. So that's where we had our, our fun picture.
Good memory.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Your honor.
Yeah, just for everybody's information, on Saturday, the Batavia Shrine Organization, which I guess is pretty near going out of business, I, that's probably not the right word. They don't have many members left. They're, and one of the things that the shrine did back in, uh, 1952 was they bought from the City of Batavia, a 1927 Persh fire engine that we had. It was our first real pumper truck. And they've been using it, if you've been around town at any length of time, you've seen this truck with the Shriner standing in the back of it in Loyalty Day parades and Memorial Days and whatever. Well, the Shriners basically came to the fire department and said, uh, would you like the truck back? We'll give it to you. And so the chief and the guys talked it over and they think there, you know, there could be some nice little publications app, you know, applications to the truck. So on Saturday, uh, the truck was driven from the Shriners. We're keeping it over behind the, the garage of the Masons at Houston and Van Otterick. And they drove it over to the West Side Fire Station and we brought it, they brought it in the back door. And it's there sitting next to our 1948 American of France, which we still own. And, uh, that recreates the Batavia Fire Department in total that was there in 1952. Those were the two trucks that we really had that did something. So I just thought I'd share it. Uh, I've been asked by a couple of people, would it be okay if maybe the shrine is having a new, they don't, they can't find the title for the truck. So they're having a new title made. So I, they're wondering if it would be okay if, if I invited them to come to a city council meeting in the near future, those who are left, and they will present us with the title and then we can all thank them for their generosity. It's just a nice thing. I mean, they're thinking that they'll be able to put it out, you know, that if the fire department has some promotion, publications activity that they want to do, uh, they can bring it out and set it in the street for three or four hours and let people see it and talk about it and have pictures taken with it. And kids can get up and it's open cab thing. So the kids can get up and sit behind the steering wheel and whatever have you. It's a stick shift. And it's not going to go anyplace too easy unless you know how to drive that type of truck. But, uh, I just wanted you to know in case you see the Batavia Fire Department running around town with this 27 Persh fire engine. It, we're not putting out fires with it. I, uh, but we are going to use it as a publications tool.
Good. I'm glad they finally got it. I know when they originally talked about that, I offered if they needed help with anything mechanical on it, I'd help with that. Cause I know it has newer running gear than 1927 in it.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Does anybody else have any others?
I do.
Go.
Couple of questions for you on wastewater treatment plant. Where do we stand on recovering those costs from the last phase of production?
It appears that, um, the, the general contractor and the electrical contractor are in, uh, litigation at this time. Trotter and Associates received a subpoena for documents, a massive subpoena for documents in the case. So we are monitoring that.
And I know last night you mentioned we're getting ready to start something with the next phase of that. Is it going to be the same contractor and electrical contractor doing that work in the next phase?
100% it will not be the same electrical contractor. I, you know, we'll, yet to be determined whether the general contractor would be the.
Yeah. So as a municipality, we award to the lowest qualified bidder and we would defer to our attorneys to determine if the general contractor would still be considered as qualified or not.
I thought maybe the next contract could be written in if it was the same guy. Every day that you're early, takes off of the bill you were late before. Get it done a little quicker.
And just realize that we're holding the money. So it, it isn't money that they owe to us, which is good.
But it's money we have to hold that we can't do anything else with until it's resolved.
And I E P A isn't able to close out the loan because of this. So, um, at some point we may receive that pressure.
Maybe just give the public a reminder about Saturday.
Oh, thank you.
You know, so that we can make sure that
Of course.
Like, nobody can claim they're not being told about this.
Exactly. On Saturday, September 25th, we have our next, uh, Community Engagement Open House meeting, and that is to present the five alternatives for dam removal and show, you know, the effect of each one of those on the depot pond. And, um, the purpose of that is to educate the public, allow them the opportunity to ask questions. But what we really want is for people to fill out the survey that has been created. And you can find that survey on the city's website, on the project website, which there's the project website you can link to from the city's website. Just go to the homepage. You can't miss the news article right on the homepage. That's about the dam in Depot Pond. And the meeting on Saturday is from nine o'clock AM to 10:30 AM or as long as we need to answer the public's question at that. Following the meeting on the 25th, we're going to move those storyboards about each one of the different concepts over to, uh, Batavia Public Library. You'd be able to visit those on the main floor of the library as you head in past the circulation desk. They'll be right in the main hallway of the library for you to see there. And, um, there'll be a QR code that you can use to access the survey. Or if you feel more comfortable, we're going to put out paper copies of the survey as well. So that if that's the way people want to, um, answer the survey, they certainly may do so in that manner. Um, the original meeting was a virtual meeting and if, when you go to the project website, there's a recording of that meeting if you would like to listen to it. Um, by tomorrow, we should have posted the Q and A. We received about a hundred questions, um, during the very first meeting. And we've got answers to those questions that we're going to post on the project website as well. Did I leave anything out?
That's a lot of good information.
All right.
That should be very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just had one comment and question. Thank you for getting the cost per homeowner put on there. Cause I think that that makes people think differently. In fact, I talked to somebody that made them think differently when they saw, oh, there's different when I think of it that way. I don't want to assume are those same costs on the poster boards as well so that, or do they print those already and they don't have that cost? Cause that's.
They, um, modified their document. So it should be on the storyboards as well.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll verify.
I appreciate that.
Trust, but verify.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any others? If not, I will have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Knob, second by Soffa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Night.